Call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting, our Zoom meeting. It's a regular meeting on January the 10th, 2022. And for the invocation, I'd recognize Chairman Larry Yoder with the Pledge of Allegiance, Vice Chairman Marty Penn.
Let us pray. Our kind and most gracious Father, we appreciate the opportunity that we have together tonight. We ask that you be with our law enforcement. Yesterday was the recognition of all law enforcement across the United States. Be with our law enforcement personnel as they try to protect the citizens of this country and our state and our local community. Be with their families as they leave home each day to protect us. We'd ask you to be with our military personnel, both at home and abroad. Be with our federal, state, and local leaders. Be with all those that that try to do the things that try to make this world a better place. In your name we ask, amen.
Amen. I say the Pledge of Allegiance, everybody stand and we'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, does any commissioner have a report, anything they'd like to mention?
I would like to mention that I've driven by and got out and actually looked at the park uptown. Looks like it's coming along pretty nicely and the splash pad is being formed up to pour the concrete and things of that nature.
Yeah, it's looking good up there. It's coming, it's coming together real good. There's nothing else. Move to the adoption of the agenda. I entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? If not, I'd ask for a vote in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that's everyone. Thank you, gentlemen. This time, we'll public comment. Is there anyone who is pressured to speak? Madam Clark? Are you there, Jim?
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, no, we didn't have anybody sign up today.
No one for that. Okay. Move along, item number two. Recognize Diane Little, Leadership Consultant, President of the United Way of Alexander County. Ms. Little.
Thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, for letting me come back with this final report. You recall several months ago, I came with a preliminary report. Didn't expect a lot of changes, and we've had just a few, and I'll tell you about those. But if we have the PowerPoint up, Chad, we'll skip that first slide and go to the second one, which just reminds the commissioners of the areas that folks were asked to rank in order of how critical they were as far as a need to them or their community. So you see those areas listed there. And then on slide three, and Chad just stopped me if I get ahead of you. If you look at that first orange block, just let me remind you that they were asked to rank those seven areas in order of the most critical need, giving that a one, down to the least critical, giving that a seven. Some of the respondents did exactly that, and a few did not. We had a total of 152 respondents, 136 online and 16 in print. And if you look at the blue block right there, it tells you that some people just ranked items one through three, some one through five. They just did a variety of things. So that's why you may see some different numbers coming up. Sometimes in that green block, it tells you that they would give three items the same ranking. So they might have said house, housing and homeless and food insecurity all came in at their first most critical need. And finally, to make this make more sense and to give weight to their ratings, I assigned the rank of one, seven points, because that was the most critical need. And then it went right on down to the least critical need having a value of one point. You will see there the new countywide results, and these are a little bit different from what you saw with preliminary, because again, we had a difference in the data. The most critical need in the county came out to be education. The second most critical need, food insecurity, and that one was not ranked before. The third one, healthcare, that one was three last time, so it stayed right where it was. And number four, broadband, number five, homelessness, and six, housing, and seven, transportation. Transportation was always at the last in just about every one of these surveys. So you see there the countywide results. That takes into consideration everybody's vote from every residential area. Then if you go to slide five, you'll see Bethlehem's results. And you'll see that each of these slides will have the results broken down by their age group, and then you'll see an overall for the whole group of Bethlehem. So I won't go through all of these, but I wanted to point out to you just as an example with this slide, that was the 18 to 32 age group, and there were five respondents there. Food insecurity was the most critical need, then education, and then homeless. With the next age group, 33 to 55, education was the most critical need, followed by food and broadband. And then 56 to 75, food was the most critical need, followed by healthcare and housing. There was no one reporting from Bethlehem, 76 or older. So their overall results, food insecurity was the most critical need, followed by education, healthcare, broadband, homeless, housing, and transportation. Does everybody see how I'm going through those through that example? Because all of the other slides follow that same example. So if you have a question, you might want to ask it now on that particular slide. Okay, hearing none, then you will see the Ellendale, I'm sorry.
It looks good.
Question?
No, it looks good.
Thank you. On the Ellendale results, nobody reported from that first age group. And you will see that healthcare was the overall result in both the age groups and overall in Ellendale. And then education and broadband, homeless, housing, food insecurity, and transportation. You're going to begin to see a pattern here with education and healthcare and food insecurity being among the top three, and then homeless, housing, and transportation and broadband mixed up in the last four, with transportation always being last. Hidden Night results, and you see with each of these, the total number of, you know, surveys that we had for each area. Hidden Night results, the 18 to 32 group couldn't decide between education and food. They ranked them both as the first or most critical need, followed by healthcare and housing. And then the 33 to 55 group, education, food, and broadband. And the next group, homeless, healthcare, and housing. So you see that the overall results for Hidden Night, and they had 46 surveys to come in, education was the top need, followed by food insecurity, and then followed by healthcare. Sunny Point, which is slide number eight, I think, Sunny Point only had four respondents from the age group 33 to 55, so their overall results were exactly the same as that group. Food insecurity was the first or most critical need, and then homelessness, and then healthcare, followed by the other four. With Sugarloaf in number nine, you had two age groups represented, 33 to 55 and 56 to 75. Their overall first most critical need was broadband. And the second, food insecurity. And then healthcare, the third, education, and so forth. With Taylorsville's results, and you have copies of this, so you can go back and look at it and digest it. I know I'm just trying to save you some time here. But with Taylorsville, you had three age groups represented, and their overall most critical need from the Taylorsville area was education. It was followed by food insecurity, and that was followed by healthcare. And then housing, homeless, broadband, and transportation. And finally, Wittenburg, education was the overall most critical need, healthcare was second, food insecurity, third, and so forth. And then you will see the countywide results by age groups. Thought that was sort of interesting. The 18 to 32 group, the first most critical need was food. And that 33 to 55 group, overall throughout the county, and there were 92 of those responding, education was the first need. And then 56 to 75, you'll see that healthcare was the first need, and 76 plus, homelessness. So I again put the countywide results here, so you would have a chance just to compare by by age groups, you know, how the county rated everything and how the different age groups rated everything. And then there's a slide that compares everything for you, sort of summarizes. If you look at this, you'll see the countywide results listed in the bottom row. And then you'll see highlighted above that, the areas that had the same first or most critical need identified. For instance, education was first countywide. It was first with Hidden Night, Taylorsville, and Wittenburg. And food insecurity was the second one countywide, and it was also second with Hidden Night, Sugarloaf, and Taylorsville. And then healthcare, you can see just about everybody identified that one as the third most critical need, as it was countywide. And countywide, then finishing up, you had broadband, homelessness, housing, and transportation. That leaves us to our last slide, some points just to consider, because again, these results are not statistically significant. We don't have 20% of the population responding and probably never would. But the top three countywide critical needs, which were education, food insecurity, and healthcare, were also identified by the residential areas listed below and by every single age group. So that tells us something. When you got to rank from four through seven, there was a little more, I guess, confusion about which ones to select. But if you look at five, six, and seven, homelessness, housing, and transportation with the countywide needs, it's a pretty consistent pattern. So again, gentlemen, I just present this to you for your information, and, you know, we enjoy the process. We wish we'd gotten more responses, and maybe we can try again. Chad, thank you for helping us with that, to post it on your on your site. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have, gentlemen.
Diane, I have a few questions real quick. In your opinion, why do you think the low turnout on the surveys?
Why do I think what?
What, what do you think the reason is for the low turnout on the number of surveys filled out?
I don't really know. We we put it on Facebook. We had it on on our page, our webpage. We had it in the paper. Chad put it up. I don't honestly know unless folks just thought, well, you know, I'm okay with that, so I don't really need to respond, because we did ask them, think about these, is they are critical for you or for your community? So it may have been that, and and it may have just been simply the, you know, the things that folks are dealing with right now with the pandemic and everything else. It's a, you know, this is, this is not something of great interest to a lot of people. So I'm not really sure. I wish we'd had more responses. And maybe if we try to do it again, we can get out there and beat the bushes and go to different locations where folks come in frequently, shopping areas, for instance, and have those surveys that we had talked about doing that. And yet, we also knew how aggravated people get if you're outside Walmart, you're asking them, you know, for something for them to do as they're going in to buy stuff or coming out with stuff. So we're just sure which approach might work best, but just getting there.
It is interesting to see, you know, folks from the Bethlehem area compared to Hidden Night or even Ellendale or whatnot. Just with the few that you got from different areas, you can tell that there are different needs in different communities.
Yeah, and I think if we take this as a reflection of that, and, you know, I cautioned you about that, because again, it's not statistically significant. But you may want to go into a community and just say, hey, this this came out. You think this is right? And, you know, do we, do we really have food insecurity issues in Bethlehem? Because I doubt that we would have guessed that as the as the overall need there. And, you know, it's it's just a matter of what else you want to do with this or what else you to ask us to do with this. And we'll try our best to get, you know, to get more responses. And you could narrow your questions, for instance, and say, as a follow up, we want to know what you mean by education is the most critical area. Is it, you know, is it this or is it that? Is it the the element of not having broadband in homes so that students can't keep up? Or we do have broadband or whatever, whatever the the issues might be? We need some responses from folks, because really, we want to direct our money to the areas that have needs that they've identified, and we don't want to do that incorrectly, you know? So we wouldn't take huge action based on this, but but maybe with some future information, we might.
Sure. Well, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity, fellows, to be be here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your report.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Signing off.
Okay. Moving on to item number three, our engineering services agreement, 2021 ARP Water Extension Project. Recognize County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for my voice. I have a sinus infection tonight. As you're all well aware, we started the process back in August of last year to select an engineering firm to recommend for the 2021 ARP Waterline Extension Project. I have emailed each of you a copy of the proposed project areas. But tonight, what we're we're asking you to do is to approve the contract for McGill Associates for the design and construction and administration work for this project. You have the contract in your package. Does anybody have any questions about them?
No questions. I had a chance to look through them. It looks, yeah, looks relatively good to me, so. Anybody have a question? If not, we need to vote to approve, correct, Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
I'd entertain the motion to approve the engineering services agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the engineering services agreement.
Okay, have a motion, need a second.
Second, Ron.
Okay, have a second. Once again, any questions before we make the final vote? Being none, I entertain a vote to approve by saying aye. I think that was unanimous. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to item number five, our budget ordinance amendments 44 through 45, project budget ordinance, page one, and our project budget ordinance, page two, and project budget ordinance, P three. Recognize Rick French, County Manager, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but we have number four. We were gonna, there's in your package, you have the request for qualifications, so asking the commissioners so that we can advertise for engineering, I mean, architectural services for the new courthouse. All this is is just advertising for it, and we'll accept proposals and then bring those proposals back to the board in February.
Okay.
This, this is before the budget amendments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and they do this separately. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And like I say, this is just RFQ to explore kind of what what's cost will be there.
Well, this, all this will be just bring the the different architectural firms before the commissioners. This will at least not even be at our meetings. It'll be actually after the meeting in February so that we can start the process. And then the board would go through the process of interviews of firms, select one, and then that firm would work with the committee as they move forward on this process. So we just have approval from you guys to advertise.
All right. Entertain the motion to approve the request for qualifications.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the request for qualification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any questions before we vote? Hearing none, I'd entertain a vote of approval with a saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposed. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Okay, we need to approve the the budget ordinance. Did they do both of those at the same time, Mr. French, or would you do it separately?
We need to do them separately. I'll go through them briefly, Mr. Chairman, unless somebody has questions. Okay. Budget amendment number 44 is to set aside $500,000 for the architectural fees for the for the for the new courthouse. And that's just, we're just trying to get ahead of that, trying to set that up. We really don't have any idea what those fees will be, but that's gives us a good place to start, and that would take us some time to spend that money. Number 45 is to increase the planning department budget to add one more day per week to the Western Piedmont contract, go from two days to three days. And this would be good for until the end of this fiscal year, which is June 30th of 2022. Budget amendment 46 is to increase the budget for fees required to be remitted to the state based on revenues collected by the register of deeds. The budget is being amended based on the year-to-date actual experience and estimates for the remainder of the budget year. Number 47 is to increase the sheriff's budget, office budget for the use of state funds for distributions of the unauthorized substance tax. The special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. The funds will be spent to purchase equipment for the K, the K-9 patrol vehicle and to update equipment on an older vehicle. Number 48 is to decrease the budget for refunds for the North Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice, calculated by the 2021 JCPC Final Accounting Reports. Aspire youth and family, a JCPC service provider was granted a one-time waiver by NC DPS Juvenile Community Programs. No county funds will be required for this item since the state waived the payback. And number 49 is to increase the fire emergency services budget for FEMA Public Assistant Grant Funds received to reimburse the town of Taylorsville for damage from tropical storm Etta. Taylorsville Cemetery Road washed, washout, which was $4,800, Madison Park damage, which is over 15,000. Grant funds were passed through the county from FEMA due to the county being the local emergency management agency. Also to increase the public buildings maintenance budget for FEMA Public Assistant Grant Funds received to reimburse the county for damage at Rocky Face Park from the tropical storm Etta. Number 50 is to increase the SSS budget for funds from the Consolidated Appropriations Act for a new program, the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. And that's to provide citizens with emergency water assistance and to provide partial funding for DSS workers, work time executing this program. Also to increase the DSS budget for Family First Grant Funds passed through by via health to provide child welfare involved. And also increase the DSS budget for Low Income Energy Assistance Program and with American Rescue Act funds in the state known as the pandemic LIEAP funds. Number 51 is to increase the library budget for carryforward funds from the American Library Association Grant, which was $21, $2,341, to adjust the budget for transfers in the school, school capital improvement fund based on the amount of fiscal year 2021 school sales tax revenue in excess of the 2021, of the 21 school debt service payments. 53 is to reimburse the emergency telephone system fund for fiscal year 2021 expenditures that were reclassified to the general fund. Transfers required by the 911 board based on their review of the county's 2021 911 revenue expenditure report. 54 is to budget for true-up adjustments for the fire departments. And number 55 is to increase the Health Department COVID budget for additional grant funds, immunization of vaccines for children's grant amendment supplemental action for COVID. We have three projects. The Alexander County Grant Project Budget Ordinance for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Act Funds. These are, this is the project ordinance for the rescue funds totaling $7,283,353. The grant for this project ordinance expires in June of 2026. Also, we have the Alexander County Capital Project Budget Ordinance, 2021 American Rescue Plan Waterline Extension Project. And and that's the other side of this for the construction of the water lines using the American Rescue Plan funds. This, this also expires in in December of 2026. We have one more project ordinance, and that's for Paul Robert Chair, Alexander County Grant Project, Project Budget Ordinance for Paul Robert Chair Building Renovation Project for $63,000. It's a, and these grant funds have to be, this grant ordinance expires in October of 2023. And I know that's a lot, Mr. Chairman, but I'll answer, be glad to answer any questions. But these are what we do every meeting for these budget amendments.
Yes, several there, so a lot of stuff.
Several there, exactly.
It's good stuff, most of. Any questions around there? Being no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the budget ordinances and the project.
Motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
And motion and a second. Any questions before we vote? Being none, I'd entertain a vote by saying aye and approve. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to item number six, amendment to the agreement between the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and Alexander County for the provision of technical planning assistance and recognize Mr. French again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the change in the agreement with with COG, with our COG, to add that extra day. It takes the total amount to $60,815. It's $12,163 more for from going from two days to three days. And I'll be glad to answer any question. This is just for the rest of this fiscal year, and then we plan to make other arrangements for next year.
Okay. Hearing no questions, I would entertain, excuse, entertain the motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve.
Okay, have a motion. I have a second. Motion and a second. Any questions before we vote? Hearing none, entertain a vote of approval with aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to item number seven, proposal for paid time off, and once again, Mr. French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We currently have a paid time off policy. We're just making amendment to it, which will reward full time and part time, but benefit employees with paid time off for their birthday during their birthday month. This is just a small benefit we're passing along to employees. And we'd like to recommend that, if you see, look at your packet, just we And we'd like to recommend that, if you see, look at your packet, just we, that we do this in keeping with our current policy. This is, this doesn't require any extra funding or anything.
Okay. Sounds like a good idea. Yeah. I'd entertain a motion to approve proposal for paid time off.
Make a motion, we approve the proposed time off for the birthdays.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any questions before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, one, one question, just for clarification. In, in the way that's written, it said that, you know, most employees would receive, or county employees would receive, I think, eight hours. You know, eight, eight hours' time. The Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Department detention center would see, receive a little more. And then EMS would be a twenty-four hour period.
That's correct.
And you, I mean, just.
That's, that's just in keeping with their schedule.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a vote of approval by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to item number eight, board appointments and reappointments. I recognize Mr. French once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two appointments for tonight. Appoint Eugene Smith for two years to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council and appoint Sheriff Chris Bowman, official to sign off on A B C permits.
Okay. You've heard the board appointments. I'd entertain the motion to approve the appointment.
Make motion to approve. Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would you go on, Tammy? Okay, sorry, I was just going to remind you to approve the resolution that we have along with the A B C official.
Yes, the res, there's a resolution attached to that. We also need to approve it from Sheriff.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. I should have included that.
No, I should have.
Okay. Also entertain a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, will we approve it?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. And number nine, other business, recognize County Manager Rick French for County Manager's report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention in my report. One is that the dedication for our court, Alexander County Courthouse Park and the splash pad will be May the fifteenth. Again, the, the dedication date for the courthouse park and the splash pad will be on May the fifteenth. We have, we'll have a program and dedication of the park on that day. And we'll get you more information as we get a little closer, start moving forward. But we're lining up a program, and I think we'll be real excited about it. Also, just today, Greg Kronk, our I D, I T director for the last twenty-two years, is retiring April the first. So I just want to make you aware of that. And that's all except, Mr. Chairman, I have some things for closed session.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Could we also vote to continue the Jimmy Duncan Lane nuisance public hearing that was tabled at the last commissioners meeting? Continue it again till February?
Okay, I was gonna try to include that here before we went into our close session. Thanks for your moment. Y'all have heard, you know, the Jimmy Duncan Lane, I think David Elder was the one with the nuisance ordinance that we had continued from our last meeting. So we need to continue it until our next meeting, if everyone's in agreement. I make it as a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from that vote. Is that possible? Due to real estate dealings.
Okay, is, is there a problem with that, Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll just note that Commissioner Panel recused himself. Okay, I like say I make as a, as a motion already. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor of continuing until our next meeting with the Jimmy Duncan Lane ordinance. I'd entertain a vote of approval with aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries with the recusal of Chair, of Commissioner Panel. Thank you, Jim. At this time, I'd, consent agenda, I'd make a, make a vote of approval on our consent agenda as given in our packets. Everyone's had a chance to look at. They have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
And motion and a second. Any questions about the consent agenda? Being known, I'd make a, entertain a vote of approval by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session per N C G S one, four, three, three, eighteen, eleven, for attorney-client privilege, economic development, contractual personnel. We will not re-adjourn. We will adjourn into closed session. I make that as a motion, so I have a second.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. All in favor of going into closed session, saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. We'll come back into closed session.